We will now move on to our 6.6, consideration of recommended budget for fiscal year 22-23 for the County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors.
You have one minute.
What's that?
You have one minute. Anita's pointed out.
Oh, sorry.
Thirty seconds.
I totally thought we were like five minutes over already. I'm just, sorry.
This is unusual for us.
Thirty-five seconds.
You didn't feel her eyes burning?
All you have to listen for is the... And you know you have to look up.
We gave you a bad time, but we love you, Anita. You can go now.
I can? Can I go now? No, I'm just kidding. Alright. I think we are good. So, good? No, we're not. It looks like 10:29 still.
We're good now.
There we are.
There we go.
6.6, 10:30 a.m., public hearing, consideration of recommended budget for fiscal year 22-23 for the County of Lake and special districts governed by the Board of Supervisors, and A, consideration of FY 22-23 recommended budget; B, consideration of proposed resolution amending the position allocation chart for FY 22-23 to conform to the recommended budget; C, consideration of authorization for affected department heads to proceed with purchasing selected capital assets prior to the adoption of the FY 22-23 final recommended budget. With that, I'll give the floor to C.A.O. Parker, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Chair. We are pleased to present your Board's consideration for, of the recommended budget for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The budget has been prepared in compliance with the County Budget Act and must be approved no later than June 30th and adopted no later than October 2nd. As you are aware, the adoption of the budget will take place after the public hearing currently scheduled for September 21st and 22nd. Your Board may modify the recommended budget prior to approval. By approving the recommended budget, you authorize the expenditures of funds for the operational needs of county departments until your final budget is adopted. Chief Deputy County Administrative Officer Stephen Carter will present this item. And I apologize, I was still laughing from what occurred previously.
Good morning, Board. So, the recommended budget appropriations for all funds for fiscal year 22-23 is requested to be $337,455,551, which is an increase of $18,69,436. The general fund appropriations are $76,237,204, and that is actually down by $6,995,140, which is an adjustment in my memo because I had, there was a last-second change and had to update that figure. The guiding principles in preparing the recommended budget continue to be to develop a reasonable, sustainable budget that will enable the county to maintain fiscal solvency for the short and long term, and to minimize and/or completely avoid negative impacts on service levels provided the public, and if at all possible, improve those services, preserve the county's general reserves, increase reserves if possible, and those would be for future budgetary needs, and to avoid utilization of a large number of layoffs, work forlows, or anything of that nature due to later on not having the funding needed. So, with those in mind, it's always a difficult process, but thank you to the department heads and fiscal staff that helped work through this. I'm proud to present it. And one of the first parts that I want to go over in the fiscal impact is a couple changes that I want to say right off the top. So, in budget unit 1120, we budgeted the ARPA funds, American Rescue Funds, of 12 and a half million in an account 8122, which is to a revenue transfer out, operating transfer out into other budget units. Well, after talking with the Auditor's Office in probably a day or two ago, not all of those appropriations are in the budget, so we need to lower the amount going out of budget unit 1120 to now balance properly. So, only $780,000 of those dollars are actually appropriated in the budget. We do plan on having the entire, if not most, of the 12 million budgeted for in September, but as of right now, only 780,000 is. So, in account 8123, in budget unit 1120, actually need to lower that by $11,726,226. That sounds like a lot. What it is, is that's the ARPA money that we've already received, and we were going to transfer it out to other departments to, per the, per the plan. We're just going to remove that, and it'll be in fund balance available for September when it'll then be allocated. The new total would be $1,228,417 for that account. So, the county budget overview, the governmental funds, general fund from fiscal year 21-22 was $83,232,344. That has decreased to $76,237,204, and a lot of that is related to exactly the ARPA as well. Last year, when it first came in, we budgeted it as an appropriation, and this year, after talking to the Auditor's Office and changing how we were handling those funds, it's now going to be handled within the revenue accounts versus the appropriation accounts. And it only went down by 7 million. The difference is the increase, so if you drop it down 12, where's the other, about $6 million? That's in your payroll increases from the MOUs that were approved. The total governmental funds have gone up actually by $4,211,261, and the overall other funds, which include internal service funds, enterprise funds, and special districts, and other agencies, has increased $13,858,175, and that is mainly due to departments like roads, where their budget has increased by a little over 3 million, behavioral health by a little over 2.2 million, social services admin by about 4.8 million, health administration by 2.2, which health administration actually has three different budget units. And the enterprise fund went up by 6.2 million, which is mainly one project. And then, moving on to the general fund appropriations, as I stated earlier, general fund is, appropriations are expected to be $76,237,204, which is actually just over a 9% decrease year over year. And the general fund is funded through mainly discretionary revenues. There are a few discretionary revenues, the main one being property tax. And property tax, I have a table here showing year over year since 1516. It has been steadily increasing or staying pretty steady, and then over the last three years or so, it's been steadily increasing. For fiscal, for this current fiscal year of 21-22, the budget was $25,416,331. I'm projecting it to be about $26,662,000, and that also goes into the budget request of, for fiscal year 22-23, which is about a 2% increase over that estimate of $27,199,324. And that is the largest chunk of discretionary revenue that is put to general fund and any departments that you have general fund support of. Sales tax is the next most important discretionary, largest, I should say, not most important discretionary revenue, and Bradley Burns is the 1% sales tax, and we've received just over 3, almost 3.9 million through May. That is almost exactly 100,000 lower than the prior fiscal year, but we still do have one month to be received. And originally, I had projected this to come in higher than it's going to, and that's because there was an adjustment made at the state level that lowered our revenue by about 400,000. Can't get too much into it, other than it was a company's filings that were adjusted. So, this year, expecting it to end at about, in between 4.3 and 4.4 million, which is much higher than if you go just two years, three years back, in budgeting for 22-23 to be about level, at about 4.4. That might be a little optimistic, so in September, may lower that depending on the new data coming in, you know, the first three months, seeing what's coming in. And then, the second part of sales tax is the Prop 172 sales tax, which is statewide. Through May of 2022, we've received just over 4.4 million, which, if you read the memo, that's actually a million dollars more than the prior year at the same time. And we continue that, we, we think that that will continue at least for one more year to be at least flat, depending on how the pandemic, the end of the pandemic happens and people's habits. We'll have a new norm. We just don't know what that is yet, so we can, we'll continually watch it year over year and make sure that we don't highly over-budget or under-budget. The next revenue of interest is trans occupancy tax. Sorry about that, TOT. This one is actually coming in pretty well, should reach the same levels as the prior year. We've received $720,169 so far this year, and we will still continue monitoring, see how, what happens with the new agreements potential, and going after certain lodging people, we'll see. And then, the next revenue source is cannabis tax. So, cannabis cultivation and business tax revenues received through June 2nd, and I put a very specific date because we had to provide money back to some of the cultivators due to the Board decision to lower it down to 50%. We've received $6,704,062, which is down a little over 1.6 million from the prior year. This was anticipated, of course, due to the, the actions and a couple of Board decisions. We also adjusted within the cannabis from budget unit 1072. Everything was going out of that budget unit as an expense, and then into what accounts are 80-80 for other budget units, which is a revenue reduction. So, what that means is the other department would have an appropriation, let's just say, for buying a building, and an 80-80 would come in, and it would nullify it because it would be a negative appropriation. Well, that came into question once we started going into salaries because of our MOUs and the need to, that was Board-approved to support the salary increases. That's not a reimbursement, so to show the appropriations correctly within the different budget units, we switched it from 80-80 for most of them to 81-22 and 23, which is just an operating transfer of, the revenue comes in to 1072, and then it looks like it goes straight out to whatever budget unit is then using the funds. And then, the revenue will show there, and the appropriations, AKA salaries, will be in that budget unit. So, that's a change that was made rather recently. And with all the changes that have happened to cannabis, I do want to say that this is verging on the not being sustainable for the, the way we're heading. If, if we do hire all of our positions, we are going to start running into not having enough ongoing revenue slash cannabis funds. I just want to put that warning out there. It's not imminent, but it is within the next three years, depending on how things go. And then, moving on to contingencies and reserves. Contingencies are appropriations that are in the general fund for, just in case if revenues don't come in as anticipated, we are requesting that stay flat at $4,548,360. So, there is a little bit of a cushion there, and our general, we're not, the general reserves are still being requested to be 12.5 million. After last fiscal year, we increased it by 3.5 million. Thank you. That represents about 16.4% of our recommended general fund appropriations. So, that would, if we receive no more revenue from the state and feds, we would be able to, it would sustain us for between just over two months. And going by best practices, you generally want at least three months. So, even though that sounds like a large dollar figure, it is actually not best practice or sufficient, in my opinion, because anything that happens, that is what we rely on for basically disaster, just not fire kind of disasters, financial disasters. Moving on to capital assets, this is where, for capital improvements in the fiscal year 22-23 recommended budget includes funding for a number of capital projects, which are mostly grant and/or other special funding items. And because we switched it up to where this is the one hearing, and September is the adopted and two budget hearing, the Board will have to specifically approve whether or not a department can acquire that capital asset before September. And on the capital asset list, there's an actual indicator on if the department is requesting to potentially purchase it before September or not, and that's one of your, your items you will talk about. So, some of the main capital assets, we're finally getting into the various deferred maintenance. There's a million dollars from cannabis that was set aside for deferred maintenance. There is about $635,000 of roofs and capital assets projects just for deferred maintenance. Dispatch is asking for a logging recorder, which is general fund extraordinary of 100,000. Repeater and radio equipment replacements for OES. A new recording system for the assessor recorder. Various roads and bridges. A medical van for public health. I don't want to read them all, but this is not an exhaustive list, it's just a highlight for a lot of the different departments of what's in there. I do want to highlight one, though, and that is, the library is getting very close and has the RFP for the, the mobile library van, and that one is in this budget as well. So, the county workforce, all funds for fiscal year 22-23 recommended budget provides for a total workforce of 1,053.6 full-time equivalents, or FTEs, which is a net increase of 15.65 FTEs over adopted budget for 21-22. So, any, any resolutions that have come through since adopted, including mid-year, are also included with that 15 number. So, it's not, there have been increases since, it's just, it's adopted to now. And the following positions are unfunded, so what that means is certain departments have considered positions unfunded, which means they cannot hire them until a funding source is identified. One Public Works Fiscal Coordinator, one Administrative Assistant in Public Works, one Assistant Engineer, all kinds of engineers in budget unit 1908 for Public Works, also a Special Projects Engineer in Engineering, budget unit 1908, one Survey Tech, which is also in Engineering, budget unit 1908, one Senior Planner in Budget Unit 2702, and three Planners in Budget Unit 2702, Community Development as well, one Deputy Assessor Recorder 1-2 Senior in Budget Unit 2707, two Library Assistants/Library Techs in the Library Budget, Budget Unit 2602, ah, 2602, that's building, Budget Unit 6022, and one Branch Library Coordinator, which is also in the library. One Heavy Equipment and Fleet Maintenance Lead Worker, Budget Unit 9911. And then, I have also listed in the memo the actual increases and decreases in positions from the adopted until now, which some of them have already been approved, like I stated before. For the Administrative Office, this is a new request, the Accountant 1-2 Confidential requesting to have it removed, and adding an Accountant Technician/Senior Confidential instead, so lowering the position. County Council, Risk Management Program Coordinator or Risk Manager, removal, and replacing it with a Risk Analyst instead. And then, also within County Council, a Deputy County Council 1-23 Senior, adding one. If you recall, at mid-year, we put in the funding and left out the actual allocation, so this is actually making up for actions that were taken at mid-year. And then, in Information Technology, Budget Unit 1904, adding a Deputy Information Technology Director, which had been removed a few years back. In Budget Unit 1908, Engineering, a Deputy County Surveyor, previously it was limited term, so it was just, you know, for a couple of years. It is now being requested to be permanent. Budget Unit 2110, District Determining, they're asking to add a Staff Service Analyst 1-2. Probation is asking for a Legal Administrative Assistant, and also to remove a Legal Administrative Assistant Senior. And then, also within probation, a Deputy Probation Officer Senior, adding one, that's one that is funded through the state, I believe. And then, Budget Unit 2702, Planning, Community Development Tech, CD-Tech Senior, adding one. Animal Control Office Assistant, adding .75, that's actually replacing extra help. They have quite a few extra help within that department, and within the same budgetary figures, we are asking to make a few people, at least partially permanent, you know, instead of extra help. Animal Control Assistant, adding 2.75 positions, so 1.5 overall. And within the Recorder's Office, Supervising Deputy Assessor Recorder, that's also one that was limited term before, and requesting for it to be permanent. The prospective demands on the general fund, as we know them so far, Calpers, the percentages charged for miscellaneous as well as our safety members. If you notice, if you, if you took a look, the percentages are actually going down. That does not mean it's costing less. So, because our raises are higher, it just means that it takes less of a percentage to reach the dollar amount needed. So, there's a normal rate of generally 9% to 10%, right off the top of whatever your payroll is, and then there's a very specific dollar amount for the unfunded liability. And because that's a very specific dollar amount, that's where your percentage starts going down because of the higher pay. And I'll turn it over to Susan for closing remarks.
I wasn't planning on doing any closing remarks, except that, that's alright, except that all departments worked very hard to get this to us in a timely fashion. I do know that Mr. Harter's here. Scott DeLeon had to leave, but Alicia will be here to answer any questions, and JT will be here shortly to answer any questions your Board may have.
Just kidding, I'm not quite done. So, of those changes that I requested be done, sorry about that, if you look in your budget book, the fund summary page, it makes some changes there. So, on line one, which is Fund 1, General County, for the estimated fund balance carryover or FBA as of June 30th, instead of being a little over 19 million, it's $7,715,715. And then, the estimated revenue for fiscal year 22-23 is now $68,536,489. So, that's, that's where you can see the difference of when I'm removing the transfer out. And then, if you go to the complete, the total line, on the recommended reserves, there was an equation issue. It should read 104,678,018 in reserves, as a county as a whole.
Any questions for Stephen? And I'm going to assume that this question's for any department head are we going to get into here, because I have, I have a couple, but Supervisor Sabate, if you want to go ahead and...
I'm going to make my comments more general. It's, number one, approving a budget, in my opinion, is one of the most important jobs that we have up here on this dais, and I appreciate the hard work that staff has done, but four days to go over so many line items and to comprehend exactly what's going to happen and how to foreshadow how this is going to affect our finances is just not enough for me to be able to go through, especially with an agenda that has so many things on there other than the budget. I know you all have been working on it for many months, and even then, there's still changes and maybe some things that you may have missed or unknowns, but for four days for myself and the public, that makes it really difficult. And I know I've been asking, and I've been offered a copy of it, but that copy was also told to me that changes were going to be made, and so it's worthless to me to start looking through and then make assumptions or make conclusions based on something that's going to change, but I just don't think that that's enough time. I have a concern on especially the cannabis stuff. I think that we are making a very large assumption on that we're going to collect something. I'm not saying we're not going to collect anything, but we know, and we sat here with people saying they still had product from the year before, some people had two years' worth of products, now we dropped it to potentially getting 3.5 million. I believe that right now, 5.5 million is coming out of cannabis, which means we're not making enough revenue, which means we're dipping into the reserves of cannabis. So, that's 5.5 million if we actually bring in at least 3.5 million that's coming out. That's why we saw it go from close to 10 million to 7.5 million in reserves, and even if we keep going at this rate, with potentially getting 3.5 million within three years, it's not sustainable, as was stated. And that's if we collect the 3.5 million, and I think that is a huge gamble for us to be making on the cannabis industry as the federal government is talking about opening up the borders and making everything interstate. What is that going to do? Does that help us? Does that hurt us? I'm thinking about our current economic challenges that we're dealing with, inflation, gas prices is definitely already infecting and will complete, continue to infect, affect the prices of things, which includes the cost of us running even an office, not just those doing public works projects. So, while yes, we're balanced for this year, I do not see this as a balanced budget, as I do not see this as a sustainable budget where I can be sure that in five years from now, everything is fine. We have an increase of 5.5 staff. I get it that some are in, in other places than general fund, but I think, I, I, I am very concerned. So, we also have a 2% increase on salaries happening for the next two or three years. All of these things, in my mind, I'm trying to go through this budget and trying to figure out, how are we going to deal with this and so many unknowns that are coming up? I think we can do something. I don't want to be doom and gloom, but at the same time, by looking at the budget, we know we're heading towards a fiscal issue. we're heading towards a fiscal issue. We're adding more positions and we're spending, we're overspending. I know I did all the calculations and that includes all of the, every single department, which does not all have salaries. But when I do the revenues versus the appropriations, we're continuously increasing the cost of running the county, not decreasing the cost where revenues and appropriations are more balanced. And so I'm very concerned that we're adding those positions. I, I would love to, so I'll make a few statements on how I think we can solve some of these I think we need a freeze waiver on positions again, because we cannot keep adding more positions in anticipation that we're gonna get more than 3.5 million in cannabis taxes. Even with what we have today, we're still losing. And if we hire more, we're gonna lose more, especially again, if we don't make the 3.5. I, we have approximately 232 positions, I think I wrote that somewhere, yeah, 232 vacancies right now, and I think we need to be strategic. And what it is that we are filling and why, and what purpose does it have in progressing our economic development? Our economic development is, is what worries me is we do not have a plan at all. We're waiting for somebody to come. And I think that, I've talked about it before, and I'm gonna talk about it today, we need a strategic plan in order to figure out how to deal with what's coming up to be prepared. And if we have a strategic plan, it makes it a whole lot easier when money comes to us to be able to say, here's our next step in our plan to be able to move forward. But I don't know, and I don't see a plan that can make sure that we're going to increase our sales tax, increase our property tax. I know we just did the housing assessment study today and approved that, but that's still far away from being completed, and that's far away from getting actual action on the ground to seeing that kind of development. Because we just heard from Mr. Carter that it's kind of in a three-year period that if we don't turn a corner, that there's some potential bad news that we have to deal with. And so I'm asking today for the board to make some changes today. I think we need to get rid of our discretionary funds from cannabis. That's $500,000 that we're throwing back into our ability to afford these things. I think we need to look at the new positions that we're opening. Some people are adding positions where there's 70% that are filled, and there's still a 30% vacancy. I need to understand better, why are we adding positions when there's vacancies in that same department right now? There might be a good reason, but without those reasons and without that understanding, we're just adding on to the burden of our revenues not meeting our appropriations. We're talking about in our expenses, and no offense to anybody whose district this is, I'm sure it's easier to speak about it when it's not my own, but we're, we're talking about adding a park and new facilities. How are we going to maintain that and staff that when right now, we're declining, not in an incline? I really believe that we made a mistake, I made a mistake, by getting rid of the fiscal crisis plan where we were looking at reducing our staff by 10 or 20%, not staff, our positions that were empty by 10% or 20% in order to be able to meet this fiscal balance that we needed, and we stopped doing that. And I think we need to go back to doing that. I would love to see from the administration a five-year projection on expenses so that we know what we need to do to meet the revenues to have those expenses be taken care of. I, I'm gonna stop there. I have a whole lot more on my list of things, but I am, I am concerned with the picture that we have, the knowledge that we have, and that we are adding more instead of finding ways to cut back in order to ensure that we don't meet that three-year potential crisis that is ahead of us.
Stephen?
So I do agree with like a five-year forecast. Are you thinking within general fund, because it's discretionary revenue that's the problem, as well as all of departments?
I'll be honest, I usually like to see the big picture. I think it's healthy for our non-general fund departments to get an understanding of where we are too, because we don't want them to have to hit that, a similar obstacle that we're looking at that's coming towards us. That obstacle affects us all. General funds is more sensitive, definitely, than the non-general fund departments, but I think it would be healthy to have a global perspective of what our five-year projection looks like.
Did you also want something specific to salaries?
I think salaries is definitely one of the biggest numbers that we should be looking at, especially since we know that there's a 2% increase, 2% increase and things like that. So yes. But those are some of my suggestions on how to reduce the appropriation burdens that we have. They're not happy comments to make, but I think that we need to have some real conversation. I'm very concerned, not sure if the rest of the board is concerned, but I'm concerned about that 3.5 million estimate, because I don't know that the cannabis market can provide that. And at one point, there, you know, we're gonna have that same conversation about reducing the taxes again, because it's not, it's a fixed number. It's not a flexible number like a sales tax number. And so as it drops some more and becomes more difficult and you become a actual real farmer where it's hard to farm, not growing a crop at a high value like it was, they're gonna be right back asking us the same thing. And if we want the industry to survive, then we probably will also make some changes at one point or see them walk away and just completely disappear from our county. And so we have some difficult tasks ahead of us, but I'm gonna be honest, today I cannot approve this budget as is, because then we would allow for 25% of our year to go by that leads us in a direction that I'm very concerned about going into.
Stephen, you have anything else to add, Stephen?
No. Well, actually, I do.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Something that, because of bringing up the cannabis and towards the MOUs and everything, I wanted to bring up that it's right now scheduled to be for 5,476,183 from cannabis to help pay for the MOUs, of which 128,987 is for budget unit 2112, which is child support. It's the only non-general fund department, for a little clarification.
And we approved that letter today to try to see if we can make that change at the state level.
All right. Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, I appreciate that Stephen spent a couple hours with me on Friday going over this. I do agree that we need a strategic plan and we need to do some forecasting, because we are in a spot that, that calls for that. And just to let you know, that's geothermal royalties that have been sitting and have not gone into the Cobb community, none of those funds have gone into that community since 19, since the eighties. So that is a specific project for a specific community. That's not just coming out of Cenair. And that there is sustainability built into that, and this is something that we've been working on for a long time with Visioning. So that's why that's there. It's, there's not a project to, it's being appropriated, but, but the project isn't there yet. So it's gonna sit for a while. But when we think about those geothermal funds, they need to go back to the community that is being affected. So I'm all in favor of the priorities being laid out in a strategic plan and some different projections so that we have ideas. And it was actually an email that I was sending to you this morning, Stephen, but I wanted to chat with you first, I'm glad you brought it up.
Any comments? I just wanted to ask again about the positions that you had mentioned under county workforce. And some of those, they'll basically be, will they be replacing other positions that aren't filled already? Or is that something that I think you were talking about, right Supervisor Sabatia, is looking at the positions that aren't being filled and then appropriating maybe these if they're in the same department to those? As opposed to just approving the positions without looking at what you can kind of remove, if that makes sense? Ms. Grant?
I can offer that though I'm slated to have one additional position, you can remove it. I've got two positions I can't fill right now. I'm hoping to desperately, because I'm tired, but, but I can certainly, we haven't had it for 30 years, so I'm sure we can, we can go forward during a time of uncertainty. And I'm happy to, to do so.
And that's kind of like what I'm, what I don't know if that's what I heard, or, but I'm thinking of is positions that aren't being used as it is. If we, if it's within departments, can they basically fill that?
Well, I, yeah, I think we need to be strategic about that, because there are some positions that we desperately need. And so I think there needs to be a lot more thought gone, put into that before we make any sweeping decisions today.
Would there be a possibility that if there was a decision to approve the positions that are, that are, you know, presented before us, to look at that strategic, non-filled positions to remove at a later date, like in September? Or would that be something that wouldn't be allowed, or would that be too far out?
We could make adjustments in September, but if, if the position is open, they can fill it, unless there's a freeze, which would then go to the CIO for approval or not.
All right. And I'm also just thinking, like, if they haven't been filled in 30 years, in some instances, why would they be filled?
In that specific instance.
I'm just giving examples of others too, that I know aren't filled.
It's, it's not the positions haven't been filled in 30 years, it's there hasn't been a position added in my office for 30 years.
My mistake, sorry. Okay, I get it. Thank you. Supervisor Sabatia?
And I think that that's why I didn't provide specifics of positions, because it's, it's more than just reviewing a number, it's understanding what does that position do for the department? Is that a position that's going to help generate more revenue by, by being a part of a team that, that works with revenue generation? And I didn't speak to, to other things that I forgot to mention. We desperately need to get up to date on our interests that we're getting from our new contract with our investment opportunity. I do not believe that we have had our first quarter of 2022 put into our books at this moment in time, and we are now in the fourth quarter of 2022. And how are we supposed to manage or even plan if we're almost a whole year behind in getting these things done? We've also, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but we've been doing a lot more tax auctions with a whole lot more properties. Where does that fit? It almost took a whole year from June of 2021 to finally, maybe less than a month ago, to see those numbers coming into our books as well. So if we can figure out how to get our timelines a whole lot closer, we can look at real time, what do we have in our accounts, rather than trying to struggle? And my, my issue with adding more positions is it restricts money in a place that may never be used. When the people are paying taxes to get services, if it just stays in a position that's salaried that doesn't get hired, then we've trapped that money from possibly becoming a service that gets put back into the community. And again, it's a lot more difficult and complicated than, than that too, but that's one of the reasons why I really think we need to review that and have a, a good conversation about it.
Vice Chair Scott?
I just want to thank staff for all their hard work on this. I know we've only been able to have it for four days, but I think as supervisors, we need to rely on staff that we've hired to do this job, that they've done their due diligence in preparing this budget for us. So that's where I'm at on this. I think we also have to realize that we're not hanging our hat everything on cannabis, that we have so many things in the works that we've been working on to try to make sure that we have more money coming into Lake County. The investments is one of them. We're unsure of what that looks like. Honestly, I don't think we're gonna see what that looks like till after the first of the year, till Patrick gets in that office and straightens that out. Again, just appreciate everything the staff has done. You know, we've just implemented so many different things. I don't think we've completely seen what the wage increase is, is going to do to Lake County. I'm optimistic. I think just having those wages increases, getting staff in place, I believe we're gonna see the fact that we're gonna be saving money, not having to continue hiring and going through that process with employees. We're gonna see a money savings, but we just haven't really seen all that yet. It's been too early. So just thank you again, and I'm ready to approve this budget today.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, those are some of my thoughts also as, as we move forward. Absolutely. Looking at the future and the uncertainty of the times that we have, obviously inflation, gas price, everything that's going on. But, you know, yes, we definitely move forward with some significant, you know, changes, you know, that we did last year with the MOUs that we created, but, you know, I'm ready to move forward too with the recommendations today. And then to have them looked at. I like the idea of the long-term strategic plan or, you know, economic development plan to be brought back to us and look at those, look at the overall costs, everything to be done between now and September, or when we approve the final budget, but looking at those things. I really think, you know, yeah, we can go into it cautiously and understand there may be changes need to be made, but I'm prepared to move forward with the budget as presented. So that's where I'm at.
Go ahead, Stephen.
Stephen?
I did want to make some comments related to the interest. So for fiscal year 2223, I have only projected about 200,000. Only within the last, you know, the last four years or so, we normally would get about 800,000, with, just within the general fund. So now that we have the new vendor onboard, I haven't seen, it's in the three-year ramp-up period, it is extremely likely that it's gonna come in much higher than 200,000 even next year. Now, once it's past that three-year ramp-up period, it should be over a million dollars for the general fund. So there are good things happening, it just, it's unknown at this stage, just like the, the money going out is semi-unknown. So I just wanted to bring that up. And also, the Teeter Fund hasn't provided any funding to the general fund in the last couple of years. That normally runs between 500 and 800,000. And Kathy Sederlin brought up to me just recently that we are gonna expect what is budgeted right now as zero, at least 500,000 coming into the general fund for, from the Teeter in 2223, which would be changed in September. So those are two actual good things in revenue that I have not taken into consideration in this budget, because there were too many unknowns.
Thank you, Stephen. Any other comments from the board? I just had a question, this is like not even at this echelon, it was actually for Director Harder, if I, if I can just ask you a question about the CSA budgets and whatnot. Were the advisory committees, they have their opportunities to review the budget and whatnot and confer with the special districts departments and whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. Just, just making sure, I know there was some concern about that when I went before, but I just wanted to make sure and confirm that with you is all I really wanted to do.
We've got a meeting with CSA II advisory committee on Thursday of this week. So we've been working with them as we prepare this, but if they've got any concern...
Probably needs to come to the microphone.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you for having my back.
Is this on?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, we work with the advisory committees in the preparation, and we did specifically with CSA II leading up to today as well. But I do have another follow-up meeting with them on Thursday. So if there's changes, we'll bring those to you before September. But the budget that's presented to you today specifically for CSA II has included their, their desired capital projects and what have you. So we're just gonna be explaining some additional details on Thursday is what I anticipate.
Thank you. Thank you for that, yeah. I think Supervisor Sabatia?
Yeah, just one last thing, and I think I've said this in the previous years before, but it's, it's very difficult, and I, the way that the budget is written out, very large print makes it easy to read, but it doesn't provide enough columns. It would be really nice to have an actual, because all we... It would be really nice to have an actual, because all we see is what was recommended last year. We know that's not what happened because it's always going to change based on what the actuals are. And then we see what's recommended this year, adjusted, and final. But when you don't have actuals, you have to start reopening up past budgets, and it's nice to have everything just kind of in columns to be able to see trends and see stuff. So just requesting again that we have actuals, at least one year of actuals when it comes to our budget sheets, because it helps to know what we actually spent, not what we're recommending or estimating that we will.
I can talk with IT to adjust our reports. The actuals, it would be, so like example of this fiscal year's budget, it would be the actuals for 2021.
That's the only one we have.
And then adopted, and then what you see here.
Yeah.
The problem, it is very large. If we put another column in, we'll try to shrink it down. I'll see what we can come up with. If everybody agrees.
Any other questions or comments from the board before I open up to public input? All right. Is there anybody in the chambers that would like to speak on this item? Joan? If you can come to the mic, please. State your name for the record.
I didn't understand a lot of things. I want to know what capital assets are. I want to know if we're in the red or in the black. And I appreciate you people because you know what was said. Thank you. I really don't know much about this, but I just, I think that the state is in a bad situation. The country is in a bad situation because of the pandemic, and now because of the drought. It's amazing that we can even think straight, and I'm glad that you people are thinking straight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Did you want to?
We're in the red or the black?
Capital assets, and black or the red?
So in the red or black, we are structurally balanced, so we're technically in the black. Where the fund balance available of $7,700,000 is being used, which would make you, it appear that it potentially was in the red, that is one-time money carried over from a prior year for one-time expenses. So like salary is an every-year thing, so that needs to come out of a certain type of ongoing revenue. But buying a building, we're not buying a building, but if we bought a building, that is a one-time expense which can be in, that's, so we're in the black as a whole. We're structurally balanced. As a capital asset goes, that depends on whether it's equipment or building, but it's large dollar amounts, so equipment over $5,000 that goes over to where the auditors' office has to handle it differently and depreciate it, as well as like remodels, so it would depress, items that would be depreciating.
And I know this is a very sensitive question, and I apologize. I, he's smiling.
Go ahead. Please.
I want to know how much of this budget is from emergency funds? I understood a lot of the cannabis analysis, I'm not going to ask about that, but when you declare an emergency, you get funds, right?
Not always.
That's why I want to, and I know I'm asking an impossible question right now, but are we living on emergency funds? That's something, we can't do that. We can't, we really shouldn't have to do that. But everybody, and it's a bad question, I apologize, but I just wonder.
Thank you for your question. Steven?
Simply put, no, we are not. The emergency funds are housed within Budget Unit 1920, and that budget unit does run on emergency funds, as well as, over the course of the last few years, we have transferred $2 million of general fund and $2 million of state funding that we received just for this type of activity, so that if a disaster happens, we have the funding for it. The only emergency funds that are theoretically in the other sections of the budget is the ARPA, and that is the one-time money that actually only $780,000 is budgeted, and it's actually all in special districts for a bridge and septic hauling station.
All right. Joan, you, thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment? All right. Hearing none, we have, I think it's Betsy Khan, if you'd like to unmute, you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one comment and one question. The comment is that I agree with Mr. Sabatier that an actual long-term strategic plan and a, an analysis should be performed. Year after year after year, we hear about having an economic development plan. I have never seen one that actually contains analysis of this kind. But my question is about Prop 172 funding. Could you please just tell me if there is a policy available that describes how those funds are dispersed, and are they dispersed to the first responder agencies, or do they go into our general fund? Thank you.
And?
The Prop 172 funds are deposited into Budget Unit 1120, which is general fund, but then moved directly in as net county cost, which is our general fund contribution to the sheriff and those agencies.
Thank you for that. Are there any other citizens that'd like to make any comments on this? All right. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for either further discussion or action. CIO?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to remind the board that the approval today basically allows for the expenditures beginning July 1st for the different county departments. I think with the analysis that we're going to provide, the five-year should help with those discussions that we're going to have in September. And that's the only comment that I wish to make at this time.
And so I'm thinking too about the topic that I brought up earlier. I know that some of the positions though as well, they're in specific departments that could produce some sort of return. I just understand too that in looking at it with, in regard to Supervisor Sabatier mentioned, would be concerned that maybe in the near future, or a couple of years down the road, we'd be at an impasse. But at the same time, just I know that a lot of departments are doing multiple projects and positions amongst themselves and not being able to complete, or they're having to juggle a lot, and it puts us in a real, real difficult position. So it's, this is a really heavy decision, and I just wanted to highlight that, that I recognize, and I understand why the positions are needed. But just thinking about the future, it's a worrisome thing, so it's a, that's all I have on that, but. Any other comments or? Betsy, you have your hand up again? I closed public input, I didn't know if you, okay, yeah.
Ready for action?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the fiscal year 2022, '23 recommended budget.
Second.
I want to see, wait a second, if those are, are those?
There's three of them.
Oh, okay, yeah, they are motion. I thought they were, for a second, I thought it was a resolution, but the first one's a motion. So I have a motion and a second. CIO Parker?
I would say to include the adjustments that Mr. Carter provided to the board, there were last-minute changes. Include that statement in the motion.
With amendments? So I move to approve fiscal year 2022, '23 recommended budget with amendments.
Second.
Right. Does that work, Ms. Grant? Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Item B.
Mr. Chair, I offer the resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Nay.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase of certain capital assets prior to approval of the adopted budget.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries.